Says battery empty, Kim. Okay, we're not using that thing tonight. All right, here we go. Follow the order, the town map dessert planning board meeting for February twenty eighth, twenty twenty four and welcome aboard. We are live here in the meeting hall on C Street as well as online and I'll first make introductions and then we'll get the show on the road so I am William Manley, I'm chair, we've got vice chair Tracy Loftus Keller here, we've got Gail Marshall next to me and Alan Kimerly and then online we've got Meredith Randolph, hello Meredith out there in Zoom world. And we've got Heidi online as well, our recording secretary, hi Heidi.
Guys, sorry, took me a while to catch my mute.
No worries and good to, good to have you with us. Everybody knows the Zoom spiel by now and just if you are online, sign in on Shaft, please. And let's get going, all right? I think the minutes we had to approve were from the fourteenth.
Yeah, there was a amendment, amendment to the initial minutes and I would make a motion to approve the amended minutes from February fourteenth as presented.
I'll second that.
Right, all those in favor here in the room, aye, online.
Randolph, aye.
Right, thank you, all right. Item three on the agenda tonight, we have a public hearing. And that is for the land use zoning ordinance subdivision ordinance and land use map amendments for the twenty twenty four annual town meeting on May seventh, twenty twenty four and Noel, if I'm not mistaken, we have six
Yes.
left.
Can you please pass through your administrative duties and verify that a couple of numbers was on the newspaper?
And I was just gonna say that in the next breath and Tracy, would you do the honors?
In this envelope, I see a public notice in the Ellsworth American and Mount Islington Islander on Thursday, February fifteenth. But and also on Thursday, February eight.
Right. Turn the reins over to you Noel.
Okay. So tonight, we're going to be talking about the six remaining warrant articles that are potentially going to be presented to the town meeting. All of them except for the subdivision ordinance which we can talk about when we get to there. So the first one is what I'm calling an article ten, which deals with lot access. This, if you recall, was a, the purpose of this change to the land use ordinance is to address some legal concerns regarding provisions under sixty eleven that relate to allowing driveways and roads that pre-existed May fifth, two thousand fifteen or existed after May fifth, two thousand fifteen to have some different types of modifications. So the purpose of that, of those provisions of that section are really to allow for the town to work with a property owner to have access to roads or driveways that are not currently up to today's standards. As I described before, there's certain concerns with the existing language in that there's some liability issues that really for the code enforcement officer and the fire team could be the sole determination of certain certain aspects. So we've been working with them quite a bit to try to come up with this language, which essentially does the same thing, but doesn't put the put the burden back to the photo officer with the party. So it starts with the primary principle, which is all lots have to maintain safe fire, police and emergency vehicle access via driveway or right away. And then there's, it points you to the standards by which those things would apply in section two, which are existing standards in the ordinance under sixty six or in subdivision ordinance five fourteen. As it relates to roads and the, and then goes back to the same subdivision under for lots of driveways and roads that existed before may fifth, don't have to meet that standard or they have to get a waiver through the subdivision process. I can answer questions.
Right, I'll open it up to the public if there's any questions for Noel on the article ten. Yep, right, none heard. Any discussion on the board or maybe a motion?
I move the planning board recommend to the warrant committee passage of what is titled here, article ten as presented.
I second.
Right, all those in favor in the room, aye, online.
Randolph, aye.
All right, thank you.
Okay, the next one is the one I'm calling article eleven. I should note that my article numbers and whatever happens in the actual warrant are not going to be the same. The business probably organized it for these purposes. This one article is essentially just changes to section eight, which is the definitions to, to either take out definitions that don't actually apply anymore or add some new definitions that actually were necessary and not included in the ordinance. I think the version that you guys are looking at, I still had that little footnote off to the side, but that's already been straightened out and I apologize for not sending to you, but there is a version that we did, there's footnote on to the side, so nothing's changed.
I'll open it up to the public for any questions for Noel.
Kathy is a question.
Yeah, thank you.
There's a new definition for manufactured homes and housing. Yep, is that include modular now?
Modular is, yes, modular and or manufactured.
Okay.
Yep.
Because previously in the Blue Zone, manufactured homes on a chassis and saying, we're not going to be allowed. Does that mean we're not going to be allowed? Is there another change somewhere so that modular housing is going to be allowed?
You mean houses on a chassis?
Um, modular houses.
We're not changing any of the uses. We're thinking, we're only changing the definition to be more consistent with what the state has for the definition of these things.
So what we know of as modular houses in here would be considered manufactured homes. Okay.
Okay, so yes, the answer is you can still build my, the logic manufacturer homes. In the sense that I think what you're talking about.
Okay, all right.
Okay, no, I'm confused just a bit. She has a point, if a mobile home is on a chassis.
You could, you cannot allow mobile phones.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes. Um, there's a difference between office building and retail stores. And I'm wondering about some businesses that sell things like real estate or boats, you know, right here on Main Street, we have liner boats and lots of real estate offices. Are those considered offices or an A D?
So if you're saying like if I'm gonna walk into a place that is my place of business that also sells T-shirts? Just trying to use an example, like what, you can be both. You could be a retail and an office building. You could have a retail component and an office component.
But there's a permit that goes along with this. And so for instance, when we moved into our old space, we were an office business. We had to get a new designation from the state fire marshal office because previously it had been retail.
Right.
So we couldn't, we couldn't do both.
Those are two separate things. So your situation, if you're talking about the fire marshal is a different thing than what the town allows. The town still allows, still allows these buildings or retail in that space. You had to get a fire marshal permit as a, as the state has a different category consideration in terms of how they deal with the life safety issues of of fire. So that it's not that the town wasn't allowing it, it's that the fire marshal needed you to do these things and work for that to be allowed. So even with these definitions, that wouldn't change. So you can still have an office building or you can sell a retail store, but if you're considered retail by the fire marshal they're gonna, and you have like a residential component above or some other type of use above, those are codes that the town does not control. That makes sense? Like that situation you're talking about had nothing to do with that.
Yeah, and yeah, like real estate is, it's office space. That's considered office space.
Yes, okay. Even though they're selling things, it's not merchandise.
But no, it's not onsite, it's not being that old onsite.
Exactly, that's what I was wondering.
You were wondering if it was retail.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, I would have called that an office space.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Good questions.
Yes.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I knew.
A motion?
Yes, about a boat.
I move the planning board recommend to the warrant committee passage of, that they recommend passage of article eleven as written.
I second that.
Right, all those in favor here in the room, aye, online Meredith?
She used, she used the word aye.
Yes, it looked like aye.
Sorry, sometimes the spacebar works, sometimes it doesn't. I said aye.
Right, thank you. Onward.
Onward, all right. So the next one is what I'm referring to is article twelve. This article deals with the new state law, which is titled thirty A, section forty three, sixty four. I've mentioned this before, we, we, when we are talking about, it was formerly known as L D two thousand three. So L D two thousand three has a required component in it that deals with affordable housing density bonuses. If you recall, when we were working on the draft of the subdivision ordinance that we had been discussing. We had this language in there as well. It was a state requirement that we have to do. Based on some review by the town's attorney. They, they thought it would be best that we spent some more time potentially working on the subdivision ordinance. So what we're doing instead is adding a new section to the existing subdivision ordinance called section five, it should be five point one seven. Which essentially takes the standards from L D two thousand three, title thirty A, section forty three, sixty four and puts it into the new subdivision so that we can be compliant with that portion of the new state law. Then eventually we will continue to work on the subdivision.
It puts it into the existing subdivision.
Correct. So that is why in the version that you have before you there's a new purpose statement under that section and the applicability section which says this section, you have to decide if you're going to use section five point sixteen or five point seventeen, you can't do both. So trying, trying to eliminate confusion. It is not an eloquent solution to this matter, but it is a, probably more likely a temporary, but it works with the ordinance. The other thing that I would like to point out is thanks to some review and comments. There was a definition, there is a definition under the under this provision called the area median income. Which, the original version that you have or may not have, trying to do, has been modified. So that it says the last sentence used to read. It's in your packet.
Yeah, this is my section right here.
Is here. So if you haven't seen, if you didn't grab this.
HUD designated metropolitan area.
Yeah, so there is no, the HUD designated metropolitan area, it doesn't really exist for this town. So what we've done is actually just changed that definition to be able to say for the purposes of this definition, the region is considered that is the only change. Since the final draft.
Why is everything underlined?
It's because we're adding, we're adding all this new to the subdivision, so, so it shows indicate, the locations and underlying indicate new. So again, I don't know if anybody's really concerned with L D two thousand three or title thirty A, section forty three, sixty four, but it is a requirement. The most, the, the language here has been lawyered up a little bit, but also pretty much corrected from the statute.
The towns and cities have until July twenty twenty four, it isn't their ordinance, so it's kind of four up with mandatory.
Right.
So that I will also say, probably talking about it way too much, but there's things that I believe in here probably as we look at it and we can, you know, start to really spend some time on this that we're gonna have some questions on, but I also think everybody in the state's in a very similar situation. And that the entity that's really in charge with the rulemaking is the the E C D, the Department of Economic and Community Development, is probably going to start to add some clarity to this over the course of the next year that we hopefully will try to integrate.
Could you just talk a little bit about the process of how we went from amending the entirety of the subdivision ordinance to where we are right now?
Sure. Yeah, so I think we've had some good, some good back and forth on the subdivision ordinance. So there's a few factors that relate to this. But I think that the draft that we had hadn't really been fully reviewed enough yet. And the recommendation was that we should not do it this year, just really try to think it through and, and discuss it more. Potentially for twenty twenty five. So rather than take a different tack from that recommendation. We would with this one. And yes, it's last minute and I apologize for that.
Yeah, nice question.
Go for it.
Um, I was gonna bring it up on that, but I don't think you should apologize for that. What I am concerned about is that we, it would be great, I think, and I'm gonna volunteer. If we spent some time, not only in this committee, but on the Luzo committee. Mapping out and looking at how and when we, during the course of the entire year, we process important changes that we'd like to propose to the town or the loser like to propose, I don't know, the town would like to propose to the town. That we have a process in place that does its best to avoid all the last minute stuff that we're seeing here and the significant changes that we're making here. I actually am not comfortable entirely with a public hearing in which we are still getting amendments to changes, at, 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 at major changes in this case, at the last minute that the public hasn't even had prior opportunity to see and decide whether or not they want to come to the meeting. So I don't, I don't think that's your fault. I think it's, I don't know if it's anybody's fault, but I think it behooves us to look at the whole picture and better ways if there are any, to process these things throughout the course of the entire year. So we're not left like this at the eleventh hour. And I am going to volunteer here and at the, on the Luzo committee, which I'm also on to spend some time on that if people are willing to risk that. So because I, I would like to, and I don't think it's fair to ask. I'm concerned, for example, that we're asking Noel to do an extraordinary amount of this interface that in any other board I've ever served on. He doesn't, you know, an advisor or a consultant doesn't do all that work. Some of that happens by board members and chairs and so forth, doing some of that work. And I I, you know, some meetings I've been to, he's essentially chairing the meeting and I, I think that's an uncomfortable position to place him in. And and I, I don't know, it's not, it's not how I would like to propose that we roll. So again, I was gonna wait till other business, but it seemed to, to do that here. So that's a conversation I'd like us to have. When we get through this town meeting, I'd like us to jump on that if we could.
I have some suggestions on that. So I'd like to talk.
I would like to.
I actually put it on the Luzo committee agenda for next month.
Excellent.
Or this month, whatever we're, we're not in March yet, but it's
Soon.
Yeah, whatever month we're.
Thank you.
So I think we can do a better job on a work plan.
Good, thank you.
But I will also say that this language has been in almost every draft of the subdivision ordinance that we've looked at since the, almost the beginning. So it is not, should not be a surprise.
Yeah, no, I'm not so interested about this.
And substantively, there's nothing that's different here except for the, how it applies in the existing subdivision ordinance and today's change doesn't substantively change the text of this ordinance. It's only to clarify that the, the area median income is based on HUD's determination of this area.
And L D two thousand three has been on the radar a while and we knew, we knew it was coming.
This isn't new, it's just how it works in the ordinance. All right.
Yeah, any other, any other questions for Noel on article twelve?
If not.
If not.
I move, we recommend to the warrant committee that article twelve as prepared and presented at this meeting with the amendment as described by Noel to fifteen point seven point three one, no, three, two. Area median income be have passage.
Second that.
Right, all those in favor in the room, aye, online Meredith?
Randolph, aye.
Thank you.
Great. All right, next one, article thirteen is related to marine and freshwater structures. This article is essentially just a clarification and elimination of some conflicting language in the ordinance that deals with marine structures. In that different marine structures require different types of permitting, but really it's, it's to clarify that permanent marine structures require permanent, conditional use application approval, the code enforcement officer can issue permanent for a temporary marine structure that's less than ten feet.
So that's like the whole dock versus pier thing.
Yeah. So we, originally, remember, we were talking about potentially trying to clarify, like if you're on a lake, you know, what kind of structure do you normally have? And if you're on the ocean, it's really a pier, blah, blah, blah. But this language is all straight from shoreline zoning and we're just really just, just putting it particularly in sixty seven where there was, there are two sections which which could even conflicted with the definition of marine structure. So we're just clarifying all that.
I should have asked previously, I want to make sure we're all working from the same draft. So is this the draft dated two twenty?
Correct.
Thank you.
All right, any questions for Noel on article thirteen? Not hearing any Noel.
All right, I move, we recommend to the warrant committee passage, that they recommend passage of article thirteen as presented here.
I second that.
Right, all in favor in the room, aye, Meredith?
Randolph, aye.
All right, thank you.
All right, the next one, article fourteen, and this one should be dated one twenty three, two thousand three. This one hasn't changed at all. And the purpose of this change is to clarify that the code enforcement officer has responsibility for determining under, under non-conformities, whether or not there's conformity to the greatest practice and within the shoreline zone for sideline setbacks. And other types of non-conformities, whereas the planning board is responsible for water body setback, conforming questions. Questions?
So essentially, if you had a non-conforming situation that wasn't on a water body, Kim can review it and
Yes. Even in the shoreline zone.
Even in the shoreline zone.
So if your, if your structure is not conforming related to the sideline setback. But, but the water body is conforming, we go get that, working with Kim rather than man, which is consistent with D E P standards. Awesome.
But if it's in the water body setback, then it comes to us.
Yep. Which is what the purpose is now in your end.
Right, any questions for Noel?
Let's talk about non-conformities.
Oh, don't we ever.
I move the, the plan board recommend to the warrant committee that they recommend passage of article fourteen as presented here.
I second that.
Right, all those in favor in the room, aye, Meredith?
Randolph, aye.
Right.
Okay, the next article, which I, I think I have labeled as article sixteen to twelve twenty twenty four. This is a proposed map zoning, land use district, I think it's probably official land use map amendment that we're going to change. Tax map ten, lots forty eight, through one through you, and a portion of tax map ten, lot forty eight, from residential one to village residential two. Background on this was that at one point in the past it was wrongly thought that this property that we're resigned, we're being requested to reason was already a V R two. And there was a project that was approved, this is a little, little slow area that was approved based on that assumption. Since then, properties have been developed, they've brought water or sewer to that area. And we're just requesting that this be made more consistent with what was already thought to be the case. So it's going from a R one to a V R two. And if you see on the map, they actually, the V R, there really is no R one around there, it's a V R two. And not sure about the history of why the map hasn't changed originally when it should have been, but we're trying to correct it.
Right, any questions for Noel on this zoning, proposed zoning change? Article.
Well, I, and I move that the planning board recommend to the warrant committee that article, that they recommend passage of article sixteen as presented here.
I second that.
Right, all those in favor in the room, aye, Meredith?
Randolph, aye.
Right, thank you.
That was it. Thank you.
Good job Noel, thank you Noel. Yeah, now there's a a lot of work behind all of that. And thank you to the Luzo committee and the warrant committee.
Appreciate everybody who read the stuff.
You know, it's you know, after we do this every year, it does feel like progress, you know, we it's, I think it's an interesting, informative and forward-thinking review process we go through with this that has tangible results here in the town and you know, it's, I feel like it's, I feel like a planning board. Doing planning.
Yeah, I feel like we did a good job this year trying to keep integrated with the Luzo and the planning board at the same time.
Yeah, I thought, I, I thought the dialogue, you know, there was good, you know, I, I think we had a decent planning board presence there. I was proud of the whole process and all the boards. So thank you.
Uh, this is Heidi, can I ask a question? Did, did the, the car, the article on the cars, they unregistered, I'm just asking. I saw that smile, Bill.
Heidi, we dropped, we dropped that, that was just decided that it was not ready for prime time and we're putting it on the back burner.
All right, great, thanks. Just didn't want it forgotten.
It was not forgotten.
Yeah, good question, Heidi. All right. We've got item four other, we have a meet and greet potential planning board alternate member. And, and I, I, welcome. Yeah. Do we have Anne's application anywhere with us?
I, I saw it this afternoon.
Can I use the other one just for the standard questions Noah's?
I think you sent it.
Uh, we have these canned plan questions. Oh, great. Thanks. I can read that a little easier. Great to have you here, Anne. First off, you know, we are so excited when people show interest in the planning board and you know, right, right now we've got a, um, a full voting board of five and we have two alternate positions available. And the art alternates are incredibly important, you know, I mean, we're life happens and one of us isn't here, then we vote and alternate onto the board and you know, alternates have been involved in some pretty heavy stuff through the years and so it's, I, I, it just benefits the whole process if we can have a, a full board and the two alternates available. So we're again thrilled about your application. And we'll just drill down through the standard questions here and just you know, tell us about your, your previous experience on boards or committee. Yeah.
I don't even know how many, a lot. And then, um, I began working with Tremont Consolidate School and left the warrant committee, pursue other things. And I felt like it was time to get back toward the town. I've been on the board of the neighborhood house. Um, I raised four children in this town and I'm on my way with four grandchildren that are coming.
Ah, congrats. Good, good. We'll keep those schools full. What else? Any other background experiences or skill you contribute to the appointment? I mean, you just mentioned a lot there.
What other aspects are you interested in?
Oh, I, you know, warrant committee says a lot, you know, and you, I'm, you know, I'm sure you get the the gist of, you know, the municipal process and, you know, we meet twice a month, every Wednesday, every second Wednesday and fourth Wednesday. Um, you know, sometimes we have special hearings and, you know, and sometimes, uh, you know, and those go on and on and, uh, no, it's all, all good.
And the site visits are good.
Yeah, site visits are. Yeah, it's like this is, I, I think generalizing here, but I think we all enjoy those and it really puts the application in your context and you get to see some pretty cool places too. Yeah, no, it's, um, I've always enjoyed site visits and you know, understanding the context of the project where we'd sit down and go through the formal review of it and it, so.
I finally made it to Martha Stewart's house.
There you go. And. So you see everything for sure and what else? Why are you interested in this appointment?
Like I said, I, I've been involved in town, the town, um, before and just it feels like part of me and I felt like it was time to get back and serve and just.
Yeah, there's a lot going on in town. You know, it's really accelerated.
I feel like I've been a little bit separated since my children grew up. And then I took a job at Tree, in Tremont. Very involved in that town as the school counselor and it was time to step back into, I've lived here the whole time, but.
Yeah, no, it's a. I think it's a very active time to be on a board in the town and, you know, there's a lot of really interesting things before us, you know, needing, needing participation and do, do you have any conflicts with being on the board or, you know, can you do the two Wednesdays a month?
We're working out okay, um.
The site visits are usually a couple hours before the hearings. The hearings are at six.
Happens to be my one day off from Tremont, I have a four day.
Excellent. We can schedule that for you. And, uh, do you guys have any questions for Anne or?
No. I don't have questions. I, I'm, well, I'm probably the newest member on the board and I started as an alternate and that apprenticeship didn't last very long unfortunately, but it is a great thing to be in that position because this is a I find this is a content dense activity and it's a high, in some ways it's a highly bureaucratic activity. And until you learn, and I'm still learning, the ins and outs of that bureaucracy, dealing with the substance becomes almost secondary when it, eventually that will shift. Um, so being an alternate gives you an opportunity. I think the practice generally is, although I think there's some dissent about that in the the planning board manual, the main municipal association planning board manual, but alternates usually sit at the table and can participate in discussions and should participate in discussions, but don't make any motions or vote. And unless they get voted in as an actually an acting full member.
Well, that sounds like a great business start.
Yes, yes. I, otherwise it's kind of like thrown into the deep end because this isn't the, and this isn't the committee that makes policy. You know, this is a committee that, that administers the policies that the town votes for. But there are other opportunities. I'll make a pitch for there's, because there's the Luso advisory committee, which actually looks at that, at, at what changes should occur. And then there's the comprehensive plan process that's getting underway. So they all build on one another.
Yeah, like tonight was a good example and what.
I mean, there's a bunch of loser folks on Zoom.
It's been very helpful.
And some of us are on that. Yeah, some of us are on that committee too. That committee, no, I don't think there's a fixed number, is there?
No, I think there's uh, seven or eight.
Yeah.
It's the more the merrier.
Yeah, to a point, I think, yeah.
It's a better place for someone maybe to start on.
No, I don't want to scare you away. No, no, no. No, but I think that's kind of a soup to nuts thing really. I mean, it's, I, that's how I've decided. I started on this and then I said, well, it makes sense to be on Luso two and now as the Luso committee representative, I'm also on the comprehensive plan that's going to get underway. So, um.
And you get a good, a good understanding of how the sausage is made.
Yeah.
Yeah. I would say Luso is really important because the policy work that you might need to sit in is on the planning boards typically doesn't happen always at a planning board meeting because you're, you're busy applying the ordinance and it's a lot of work to apply the ordinance. Which is the reason why the Luso committee was created to begin with. Right. Because there wasn't a lot of planning happening because there was always a lot of reacting.
Yeah, the reality is, is the majority of our efforts are, are really about process.
I mean, we are having the public hearing on these proposed changes because that's how the ordinance is written, that it's up to the planning board to have that public hearing. But most of that work normally gets done at the advisory committee. So there, there's plenty of work to go on.
So there's a question online about, um, saying, can you please share Anne's full name and what her experiences are?
Katrina would like to know.
Katrina would like to know.
Katrina.
Anne Dalton, Katrina. And could you just repeat your experiences, Anne, again?
Can she hear me or do you need to write it in?
Uh, she should be able to hear you.
Okay. Katrina, I was on the warrant committee for many years and, uh, raised children in the town, served on the board of the neighborhood house. Currently a school counselor at Tremont School. Love the time out there. Happy to serve.
Thank you.
To everything there is a season. To everything there is a season.
Did you hear that, Katrina? Was that good?
Yes, I love Anne Dalton and I'm glad to know it's Anne Dalton.
There you go.
Excellent. Jerry's got a question.
Well, more, more of a statement. It's really hard to hear people in the back of the room when they're not near the owl when you're online. We had a complaint last night from some people who may be slightly hearing impaired, but they, um, if people speak from the back of the room, it's hard to hear what's, what they're saying. I heard it fine, but, um, just as a suggestion, people might want to come up front to make their appearances.
Jerry's really loud tonight.
Well, it's too late now, but it's just for future.
No, it's all good. All right. Well, um, I think Anne would make a fantastic addition to the planning board, so.
Would you like a motion?
No, please.
I move, we recommend to the select board that they appoint Anne Dalton to be an alternate member of the planning board.
Oh, Tracy Keller, I second that.
Right. All those in favor in the room? Meredith?
Randolph, aye.
Right. So we'll, I'll send a letter over to Claire or email saying, hey, look, you know, board of select, make the recommendation, the board of selectmen, they actually appoint you and then you get sworn in and you're on your way.
So you'll probably be on their next agenda, I guess, whenever that is. Well, they just had a meeting on Monday, so it'll be, it's two Mondays.
Yeah, it's not gonna be next Monday, but. Yep.
Actually, it will be next Monday. They, they moved the, uh, select board meeting one week.
Even if I let Claire know tomorrow, they don't need.
That I don't know. Um, it's usually, it's usually Thursday.
Yeah.
Hi Heidi.
Hi Anne, welcome.
Mentioned that the next board of selectmen's meeting is actually going to be in fire station, the new fire station. Because they're going to be setting up this room.
Got it. So I'll send Claire an email in the morning. Thanks, Anne. All right. Any other, other? Who wants to make the?
I move adjourn.
There you go.
I second that.
Right. All those in favor in the room? Meredith?
I will allow us to adjourn, yes.
Thank you, Meredith.